Enter your participant ID followed by pound, otherwise just press pound to continue. You are at the meeting now. There is one other participant in the meeting. You are muted. You can mute or unmute yourself by pressing star six.
Hello?
Hello?
This is Maya. Is it, who is it? Is there anyone else in the meeting?
Carl wasn't in the meeting, Maya.
Hey, hey Carl.
Hello Maya.
I was here earlier, um, and then it went out on me and...
Yeah, I couldn't get, I couldn't get on until just now.
Yeah, I came here earlier and Angela was there in face of it, five people was, was in the meeting. But, um, Angela was the only one to answer and then it just said goodbye and shut my phone off. So, yeah, I, I just failed to get on too. It kept saying that the meeting hadn't started yet. I know, yeah, it just, it just, yeah, it just let me, just Angela, it just let me back in. I was just on hold with the community. Yeah. So, I don't know what this President Bowie owns.
Says Candy Duncan is the host now.
Candy, let's get this party started.
Come on Candy, let's see if you can run.
Carl, are you on your computer or on the phone?
I'm on the computer.
I couldn't get on, my computer didn't work on this one, did it? I only got knocked off for just a couple seconds. I'm on my phone. He didn't make this me, even the used computer, since we're not videoing. No problem. I'm on my phone. See, I think my internet is that I just quarreling.
Is anybody where Cory is?
That's what I'm trying to say.
Well, we got the Pro Ten if we need her. She's here, so we're in.
I'm here, I'm here. Let, let me text him and see if he wants me to start. Let me text him.
I did have a correspondent there from Elkdale. And, uh, they sent me an email, I forwarded it to President Bowie regarding, uh, maybe the use of the amphitheater coming up for Sunday, depending on what the governor's, uh, tact is on, uh, on opening the state up tomorrow at 11:00.
Oh, tomorrow isn't so heated.
Yeah, well, she's supposed to give a press conference, I think, at 11:00 tomorrow to let us know what her plans are.
Right.
If she's got...
Yeah, tomorrow is the 40th, isn't it?
Right.
Oh, yeah, so, so it won't open tomorrow, Carl?
No, no, her press conference tomorrow is to let us know whether or not she's gonna open the state on Monday, on Friday, the first. So, we'll know tomorrow whether or not we're gonna be open, and I guess, uh, Elkdale was just asking, since, uh, we will open, if we do open, we'll open with new social distancing rules. Uh, I guess they're looking to have plenty of space to be able to have their congregation out there, maybe do something bigger, but, uh, anyway, I forward that over to Council President Bowie so he can look at it and talk about it this evening if necessary. Just wanna give everybody a heads up in case you guys have no folks to go to Elkdale.
I guess, I, I just want to, um, make sure everyone read the emails from our attorney regarding the, uh, conducted, the meeting. Um, and it gave us those two reasons why we should, but it kinda gave us some narrowed down, um, but it considered essential work.
She emailed from, uh, we don't have, the one on, uh, Public Works, Major Max, uh, regarding COVID-19, open meetings and...
Right, and, and since, uh...
It just narrowed down. It, it, it appears to me that it narrowed down because it gave us two reasons, you know, I was looking at essential business, essential business is business of the city, but then it goes on to add more questions. So, uh, everything we deemed essential may not be essential, and we definitely need to have in the meeting minutes that it would be essential. Um, everything that we're discussing, and I don't know if that was brought up last, you can put it in the meeting.
No, no.
So, we need to, to make sure we keep a narrow focus is what I'm saying. Because it's essential business, that's it.
Yeah, everything I bring up is gonna be essential, so I'll, I'll say that before each one of my, uh, meetings. Yeah, but it...
Hello, can you hear me? Hello, can you hear me? Yeah, how's it going, my lady? Hey, can you hear me? Yes. Oh, good, good, okay, sorry to get in now. Hello?
Your home meeting locked, you got locked out of your own meeting?
Hey, sometime, sometime I tried to get in, couldn't get in, this and that, I was in for a minute, it wasn't that, but anyway, uh, have we started the invitation yet?
No.
Okay, then, uh, going on call this meeting to order, um, Councilwoman Jackson, I know, I heard you earlier, can you give us the invitation please?
Sure can. Dear God, we could thank you right now, Lord God, for another day in the land of the living. Lord God, we thank you for another opportunity, we remain the praise, we honor the glory that is in you. Lord God, we wanna bind our minds to your mind right now, in the name of Jesus, we denounce anything that is unlike you, Lord God. We break our minds, our bodies, our thoughts, any suggestions to your will, Lord God. We ask you to work in us and through us and something that's your will alone, Lord God. Lead us and guide us as we may rightly survive, that which is necessary for our city, Lord God, that which is good, Lord God. And if we may be the men and women of God, the leaders that you have called us to be, these and all of the blessings we asking your son Jesus' name in it.
Amen. And thank you, Councilwoman Jackson, uh, at this time, uh, to the Madison report, is the mail line? Is the mail line? Okay, we're having citizen's request. Attorney, Madison, are you online? Attorney Madison? Attorney Madison? Okay, uh, to the business item there, uh, Councilwoman Yambla, business item number one, Tri County Emergency Work for War Two?
Yeah, I had, had some emergency work done, and if y'all remember when we had the torrential rain and we had some rotten sewage and debris, and I've mentioned this before, and, um, tri county needs to get paid, and so, I'm sorry that we don't have that before us, and I'm sorry that I don't have it before me right now, but I'm at home. Um, but that's real, um, oh, I still have that before me, I apologize, I wanna say it's like, oh gosh, it's, it's like fifteen hundred and something dollars. Oh, this lady, are you there?
No, Ms. Wade is right here today, she's out of seat.
Okay, um, oh, but anyway, can I, let me look at the, just a second, I can tell you how much it is, but I wanted to see about voting to get it paid, um, I wanna see that voting to get that paid, I will find it in just a second. Let's see, see how much it is. Um, because we need to get that paid. And, um... I don't know how to use this thing. Uh... I, I know I've kinda done this somewhere. Well, if, if you wanna leave though, and I'll come back to it shortly with an amount, but anyway, it was, we had, and when we had that emergency and I had to have them, um, drain off all the water and get rid of all that rotten sewage that was coming up in the yard. I had to have them go on Miller, Miller Drive, I go, I think, I think Councilwoman, that wasn't mine, I had it done, but I think Councilwoman, uh, she got to type correct, and that was the whole word, but, but I had to call that in, and then I had, I, um, had to get it over here on Wilkins Road. We had a bad sewage thing where the, that it got the filters, okay. I'll find it, if, if you, if you wanna go to the next while I sign it on my, um, in my phone here. Uh, Councilwoman, uh, Yambla, thank you so much, I just received...
I'm sorry, I'm trying to look for it, because I, I don't get this.
It's okay, we'll come back to you, I just received a text message from President Bowie that he is in a bad area. So, I will, I will resume, I will take over from here and hope for...
Okay, I'm, 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 I'm just...
Be having a bad area. All right, it's twelve hundred dollars. Hello?
Hello, prayers.
Okay, wait a minute, all right, I found it, it was, it, all right, it is two, it's two invoices that she, one of them was from an invoice, um, February the 12th, for what's done on the intersection at McJustie and Medical Center Parkway, that was produced, that was for a, a, um, just a, a bad thing. That was for a regular work order, McJustie and Medical Center Parkway, twenty hundred dollars, those were regular invoice, but for the emergency, what, for twelve hundred dollars? Um, I mean, I need to get a vote for it, but anyway, especially the emergency, when it was twelve hundred dollars. But anyway, I've got two invoices for tri county. The mayor's not signing. But even...
Okay, what, what's that total?
It is, the total is thirty-seven hundred dollars.
Okay. Well, I guess what we probably can do is just go ahead on, I'm on the road, tell them that, uh...
A different invoice is for two different work, one on Florida State and one on February the 12th, but the one on Thursday was, um, was, uh, emergency.
Okay. Well, I guess what we probably can do is just go ahead on, put it, put them on a consent tomorrow to move forward to pay them, uh, 'cause I know, uh, basically with these, uh, teleconference meetings, uh, up under Governor orders, that basically, I don't think we could talk about and vote on it. Anything, get them with coronavirus, and also, you know, paying, paying a bill, so that is considered paying a bill.
All right.
Okay, anything else?
Okay, Carl, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you, uh, next, I'm, Mr. City Personnel Manual, uh, council members, uh, I know this is one thing that we have been talking about, uh, I have ran across two individuals who, who will be interested, who, who may have the interest in wanting to, uh, amend our personnel manual. Uh, what I would do is at the next council, at the next work session, I would have them to come before the council and to give us a update, you know, some of these and the price that they would, uh, that they were probably charged for us to update our personnel manual. Uh, as you know, uh, as far as with the recent debacle with the, uh, with the FSLA thing, uh, that still need to come before the council and, uh, before, you know, everything is, uh, as far as whether dealing with races or finances, that's something that we definitely need to do. Now, another thing that is about to come up also, uh, I learned about this a year ago, when you are a state employee, you can either be considered a tier one employee or a tier two employee. Uh, basically, a tier one employee is, uh, where you can just do twenty-five years with the state and retire, but if you would like to do a tier two, consider yourself as a tier two employee, uh, you would have to just retire at the age of sixty-two, uh, not just twenty-five years. And I know a lot of other cities are doing a resolution, uh, hitting employees beside, you know, do they wanna stay a tier one, up on the tier one, or the tier two, but also, Ms. Wade's not to be part of this, the conference don't need a, uh, a, uh, monitoring of that, so, uh, once Ms. Wade gets back, uh, I definitely can let her look at that, uh, in the meanwhile, but we have a year, uh, up to a year before we need to go ahead and do a resolution to, uh, either, you know, if they wanna do tier two. I do have a contract of the resolution, I would just add and, uh, get it to, uh, the council member, uh, email it to them, so they can look over it. This is not something that we need to do now, but I just wanted to bring it to your attention, and we probably, like I said, we have a year before we can move forward on it. Uh, and in light of that, uh, I would definitely go ahead and get you the information. And as far as my other business item, uh, the new norm, uh, basically what we're looking at going, like I say, with MFM, whenever we do a teleconference, uh, meeting the holiday, uh, up under Governor Ives mandate, that we can basically vote on and cover this, the coronavirus, and also the benefits and incentives minimums as it relates to the city government, uh, stuff like that. And after this, after tomorrow, basically, I have twelve hours to post the, uh, summary of what's appearing at the seat, and I've been working with Ms. Ivey, uh, she will post it on our Facebook page, our Facebook page, and also, thank Councilwoman, or what's up, yeah, tomorrow, uh, she will, uh, uh, do the summary and put it on our Facebook page. Are there any questions? Any questions? Hello?
No questions.
I'm sorry, I'm being...
Hello?
Uh, we, we hear you, Mr. President, no questions.
Okay, all right, thanks, sir. Um, Councilman Bowie, I think, uh, you had something, uh, I took my email, now I can get a chance to see it, so, uh, can you bring that up about what you mentioned?
Yes, um, uh, I mentioned it earlier before the meeting began, just kinda give everybody a heads up on, uh, the solicitation I received from Ashley Mason today at Elkdale Baptist Church, uh, Ms. Ashley and the good folks, Cory down there at Elkdale Baptist Church are exploring ways their congregation can meet by still practicing social distancing. Uh, obviously, tomorrow, as we discussed earlier, the governor's gonna come out and let us know where we stand on the stay-at-home order, and whether or not that'll continue to move forward till May one, or if there's gonna be any changes. Uh, they're asking, if possible, to look at the amphitheater for the weekend of May tenth, which is Mother's Day weekend, at ten a.m. Uh, there is a question regarding cost of the facility and so and so forth, but again, uh, you know, not knowing how we're gonna handle things during COVID-19 as far as being able to rent this, or what the status is gonna be after the governor's announcement tomorrow, uh, really don't know how to play this, but we do have until May tenth, uh, which is Mother's Day weekend, so it's not this Sunday, it's this Sunday next.
Okay.
So, again...
Thank you, go ahead.
I, I was gonna say, I don't, I don't, I don't, I turn, I tend to Elkdale Baptist Church, but it's something the city council's interested in, or would like to be a part of, or at least facilitate with, perhaps there's a reason we can, uh, work out with them to a multi-denominational, multi-congregational type approach, so we can expand it larger, or just make a decision how we wanna support this, or just turn it over to the mayor's office and let them make the final decision. But I did my job to bring it to the attention of the city council, again, since we are in COVID-19 times, uh, and this, this request would be happening if it wasn't for COVID-19, it seems to be applicable to the regulations associated with the meeting we're currently having, that it's COVID-centric.
Okay, Mr. President. Uh, thank you. Any questions from the council? Any comments?
Uh, Mr. President, I don't have a question or comment on that, but, um, I, I may be able to, I, I sent you a, uh, a text regarding something Mr. Speaker had, had, had said. Did you get that regarding the resolution that we need?
I haven't had a chance to look at it, I haven't had a chance to look at it.
We, we need a, a resolution to do, uh, uh, to get an agent's opinion.
Okay.
So, we put that on the consent agenda for tomorrow, and I'm...
Okay, yes.
We got a resolution that needs, uh...
Okay, uh, would, would you do the resolution?
Uh, we are, I'm just gonna email it to the nation for you tomorrow.
Okay, thirty-five.
To argue whatever, we'll talk about that later. We'll have a, we'll speak with the council tomorrow, I'm eight down to eight councilmen, how about that?
Okay, that'll, that'll work better. Uh, any questions about what Councilman Bowie brought up, any suggestions? Councilmembers?
I was gonna say, I guess you can't say much without, say, after tomorrow, let's see what the government takes, and then we can...
Okay, and what we can do is we can just probably just put it, put it on, uh, after, say, tomorrow, the little board, yeah.
I think it's all right, it's a little too bad on it.
Okay, I'm just asking for any comments or anything like that. Also, uh, Councilwoman, uh, Jackson, revenue and, uh, financial, financial reserve. Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes, I can hear you.
I can hear you, yes ma'am.
Okay, and so, with the, um, reserve or revenues, I wanted to initially talk about, um, the decline in revenues, um, that we, um, are likely going to be spending because of the, of number of businesses that are closed or, um, you know, listed in certain functions, and I wanted to offer a suggestion about the budget and how things should, uh, freeze our budget at this time, and everything should come before the council. Um, I see that there are a couple of other cities, um, throughout the state that has done such, um, because of the revenues, and we're going to have to look at what we're going to be doing. As, as you all are aware, I think, Mr. President, you brought up later, um, there's an op, option to actually, uh, allow businesses to delay, a delay in, uh, providing their taxes, and, um...
Yes, sir, that's true.
Right, and so, that's the case, and we won't be receiving, uh, those revenues, um, and, you know, most of our budget, um, comes from those revenues, they're taxed, if you, if you look at the budget, and so, uh, with declining, um, income and revenue, so we're still spending on the same scale, I, I, I wanted to, um, make sure that we put that out there and acknowledge that there should be no spending, um, before the council makes, um, vote on that, because that is something we're definitely going to have to watch, and more so than on a monthly basis, like we've been doing, because, um, the shortfall that, that, um, may impact government operations altogether, convenient, um, they, the, uh, council spoke on last week at, uh, our work session about a reserve, um, and I, I remember our council candidate initially wanted to call it a pandemic reserve, but we need to have some type of reserve, and so, I wanted, and I know you just said that Ms. Wade's not on the call, but I wanted to, uh, suggest that we at least have our ten percent reserves, which is required by state law, uh, which we're not in, in, in terms of this time, so at least look at that ten percent, if we could do that, and of course, we could always use that during this emergency time, but we, we need to have our ten percent, um, in there, and we need to cut that off spending, um, some, some, uh, cities are already doing furlough, some people, some cities are already laying off, and all those things, uh, and so, we don't wanna be in that position, but we need to be, uh, prudent, and, um, we need to do some things in place, so we don't give them a position and another seventy employees to be displayed off.
Yes, ma'am. All right.
Mr. President.
Go ahead, Councilwoman, uh, President Pro Ten, Councilwoman.
Yes, um, so, and, Councilwoman Jackson is correct, the reason I brought that up is because of the impending economic injury, uh, that we are going to afford to her, and we don't know exactly what that is, so when I brought it up on last week, I did tell you all I was bringing it up again on this weekend, hopefully, have the numbers with the treasury I don't have, I wanted to have a number and the name for the line item itself, or whether we can call it a pandemic, uh, a reserve, or whatever we can call it, the appropriate name, and I still want to do that, and I still want to place that on the floor, uh, so that we can, uh, commit ourselves to that particular reserve, as I stated on last week.
Okay, um, uh, hopefully, Ms. Wade, uh, will be back on tomorrow, uh, which I think you, we, we're scrolling back and forth with how much that would be, um, so hopefully she...
Uh, this, this, she, this happens within the week that we met Mr. President this Saturday, uh, she had to give us a number?
I remember she said, correct, one, three, I can't recall, I think it was one D, as she said.
Okay.
If I'm not re, uh, 'cause I remember, uh, yeah, she did, I think it was one D, but I would check for it, um...
I would like to move on that tomorrow if we can hit that number.
Okay, I would check for it, um, um, that could be, um, I would move over, any other discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, I would, you also asked, uh, for, we also asked, uh, Ms. Wade about, uh, the potential for treating the budget in urban, uh, stuff.
I think I should do that, yeah.
How that would impact us, because we want, we want to be, uh, as, um, the best steward we can right now, and I know that it's, it's, it's difficult, not only for us, not to get the necessities met, but for us, for the finances to ensure that we're more comfortable, our expenses are done, and all of our financial obligations are met, and so, uh, I know there may be some things that really need our attention, but we're gonna have to prioritize it at this time, and so, I wanna be, and make sure that the council is making those far decisions on how the city, it is our responsibility to find it.
Okay, I would definitely reach out, uh, tonight, if she's feeling that, I'll reach out to her, but I remember her saying, I think it was one D, if she wants to put a reserve along the lines. Okay, any other comments, questions? Okay. Any other comments, questions? Are you can't, can't just-
Yes, the president.
Yes, yes, Councilwoman Jackson.
I, I do want to, uh, uh, and I kind of agree with, uh, Councilwoman Jackson, Mitch, by three of them. But now, if there's an emergency come up and we need some funding for something like, I got a cave in, I can come here down the corner, water, the busy street, uh-
Yes, sir.
But, I mean, with that, with, with that might be able to be free up to do talks with an emergency. Are we talking about freezing everything?
I think she said prioritize, if I'm correct, Councilwoman Jackson?
Yeah, that, that's exactly what I said, prioritize.
Okay. Okay, good. That's, that's good.
This is some of the trouble, um, and maybe we could, um, we can allow him to discuss that tonight and hold on it if there's impending emergency, that's not an emergency, maybe an emergency. You know, this is how we, how we do think, we all, everything is always an emergency. And what we need to do is make sure that we prioritize. And so if there's something in your mind that needs to be addressed, be it, you know, um, Mr. President, I was, in the sense that we asked, we attended, and we just answered it. And if it's not answered, then you don't have a right, some way to hear this emergency, go ahead and, and get some, get some leave on it. Because you know emergencies, especially, uh, it doesn't negate us from doing certain things as we learn through the reports from the public affairs office. Um, and so we want to just go ahead and do that anyway. But my, my, my concern with, um, the budget is that we, we, we have things that, and there are one things is that we don't even think about, um, that we have, um, returned, uh, the twenty thousand dollars that we're going to have in July on that fund payment that starts July twenty-third, the twenty thousand dollars, um, on top of the thirty-eight thousand or six thousand that we already paid. And so that's the twenty thousand additional dollars that's going to be coming up. It's money that's coming out of the, um, our, our, um, pocketbook, um, that the council is over, um, coming out of the city proper each day, what we know, they're not, not those items that we can put on, on the agenda or we're looking into it. So we need to make sure that those obligations are going to be met or, um, work something out quickly because there may be a situation where we have to have the treasurer's, mayor, have a discussion about putting out things that, um, I don't, the care staff did not, from my understanding, address, um, the small municipalities like we are. The first one is for five hundred thousand or more. The second one did not, from my understanding, include us either. And so we're going to need to know how, we're going to be able to pay those minimum things. And just looking that we're going to have an increase in July, and this is almost May, of twenty thousand extra dollars a month, and we know we're not going to have revenues coming in. And you, um, Mr. President, you told us, you said that June, July, August, those are a lot more. And so we're, it's just going to be, have to be as cautious as possible about, um, our finances and-
Okay. Thank you, Councilwoman, uh, Jackson. Any other questions, comments?
Uh, I do want to just add before you go on to the next item, because I will be discussing it under the COVID update. Um, so small, uh, small town cities are included, uh, in the package. There are things that we have to apply for, and, uh, if we don't, uh, put the rubber to the road and apply for it, even with fees, uh, city governments are included in that, but city governments have to ask for the dollars. So, but I'll, I'll, I'll send that in my COVID report, I should get to it, Mr. President. Right, not, it, not, it's not easy money. It's competitive money we're going to have to apply for. We're going to have to, uh, put our best before, and, um, given what we've done with asthma, we're going to need a lot of pre-infected. Yeah, I just want everybody to know that we are included because Councilwoman School has been working hard on that, so I just want everybody to know we are included in that package.
Okay. And that's part of that Tuesday, uh, meeting that, uh, as is related to the coronavirus that Council, you mentioned, that State Church, you know, that, uh, uh, that's last several months. All right, any other questions, please? Comment? Okay, I would follow up with Councilway, if anything. Uh, next we have Councilwoman, Nancy McMichael-Cord, the municipal judge, and, uh, update, just a down this comment.
Um, thank, thank you.
Go ahead.
I had asked for, uh, I had asked you to request, um, Judge Hager to be present, he'd be present if I can.
Judge Hager, are you on? Judge Hager? Yeah, I did, uh, of course, this, this first, Judge Hager?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you. Go ahead.
We can hear you now. Judge Hager, would you please, uh, because this is a public meeting and, um, because not a lot of people attend this, a public safety committee meeting, would you please update, uh, everyone, uh, concerning the update that you shared earlier about reopening and, and why, uh, or why not reopen or reopen or reopen? And, and that plan that you shared, would you please share that also? And then I'll move to my next item concern.
For reopening and the nomination from the judge, that's-
No, 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 of course, of course, this is not the municipal court opening, reopening.
I would say that, but it's the city council that says they're going to appoint, and this was us.
I'm not talking about-
No, she's not talking about that, there it is.
I'm, I'm saying the update that you said about reopening the court, how the court itself.
Uh, you went elsewhere, around May twenty-first or something, I think you did make reference to May twenty-
Fourth, May twenty-first or something, you don't know?
See, we have, we're operating under the order of Alabama Supreme Court and we're operating under the direction of the presiding judge of the fourth judicial circuit. Uh, he are in the fourth judicial circuit, the presiding judge, he's over every court in the fourth judicial circuit. Does that make sense?
Sure.
Whether circuit, district, municipal, or whatever. And our plan from municipal court, selling, trial, and reopen the court under whatever guidelines or given out by the street court and opposite circuit to it on May twenty-first, and we're going to have two dockets, basically. We're going to have two times. We're going to have a docket at the beginning of our usual time at eight-thirty, in the morning for all the new cases, which would be the rest, make our twin officers and the citizens' complaints where the magistrate is bound. Probably call the issue a warrant against someone. The new cases will be heard at eight-thirty, and the cases where people owe us money and that kind of thing, they will be held at one-thirty. Show call of the death for why a party action should not be taken by the court to try and collect dead money. Does that, that don't make it plain enough?
Uh-huh, that's real plain. Thank you so much, uh, for that report and your, uh, and your plan for, uh, May twenty-first. And so my next item is, uh, related to that. My next item, uh, Mr. President, thank you, Judge Hager. Mr. President, it's related to the municipal court judge appointment and, uh, also at the public safety, uh, committee meeting today, uh, at the public safety committee today, this, this was also just briefly. And, uh, in light of court being reopened, first of all, let me just think of this. This is just personal opinion and we all have it, so I won't, I won't give too many personal opinions. Y'all know I don't do that, but I would be afraid to open court, okay? But that's just me. And so, secondly, uh, if court is to be opened on May twenty-first for those, for those particular cases, if court is open, then I, I'm bringing back my item for municipal court judge appointment. We've had interviews, we've had the interviews a long time ago, and so I'm going to put our nominations on the board.
Councilwoman, uh, that May twenty-first is tentative based on what I previously mentioned, based on what the street court said. And of course, I mean, I'm not scooping, I'm going to, uh, make sure that, uh, you know, what the health professionals are saying today. I'm not going to listen to this, and then the personnel from the city is found there and rehired. And, uh, so I guess I do say it's tentative day, and maybe put back.
Okay. And so, uh, thank you for that. And so, again, I will, uh, Mr. President, be bringing up, uh, the municipal court judge appointment that we have had, we have, we had the interviews a long time ago. I don't know if it was before the pandemic or what, but it's been a while. I, I attend, I'm not on the public safety committee, but I attended because I wanted the, the knowledge and the, the range of, uh, skill that the interviewees had, so I, and I was there. And so I'll be bringing that, Mr. President.
Okay, well, also to add, when I mentioned, uh, public safety meeting that, uh, we have a letter that's coming from Attorney. I would ask you, Councilman, to look at that first before, um, before we move forward with this municipal judge appointment. Uh, I would check with Major Madison, also, and also too, with Judge, um, Hager. Uh, I know there were some concerns that we had and we needed, we needed to look into, uh, a situation. But, uh, I charged them with, asked them to look into the situation, uh, to make sure that everything was, is okay. But I, I asked them if they would prior to us making a recommendation to have us something right before we move forward.
Okay, so, yeah, I heard that earlier too. So where, where to be concerned, something, Mr. President? Are they coming from the council or someplace else?
No, 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 not with the council, no. This is something that we may need to discuss in terms of, that's not, uh, I'm being, so-
Well, we won't be calling it by name, but I wanted, I was hoping to have, since I asked for it earlier today, I was hoping that there's just a critical button that that would be sent over to the council before this five o'clock meeting. And I looked through my email and I did check it earlier. I don't have it unless other council members have it. I don't have what the concern is, so it's difficult for me to kind of try to fashion it a little bit earlier today in the public safety committee and then try to fashion through it now. I don't want to be tomorrow trying to fashion through it because I thought we would have it in our hands by now, since it's something that's already been produced. Uh, Judge Hager said earlier that he had already permitted this, and so to email it to us is just a quick of the button, the send button.
Yeah, that is true, but, uh, for us, we, you know, like I say, we, we wouldn't take it forward on it tomorrow if we was going to do it, and it would be the first thing in May.
But I would very much want to see the document mean nothing. I would like to see the document.
Well, basically, well, okay, okay, I was following it up because I was hoping that, uh, Attorney Madison was on the, uh, was on the phone, because I know he has been-
He's on the phone.
Attorney Madison?
He's on the phone.
Attorney, Attorney Madison? Okay. But I will follow it up with his phone tonight.
Uh, could y'all please, for the council tonight, so we were going to-
Please, yeah, please.
I have, I have, uh, Judge Hager, if you have it, then you send it to us.
Judge, yeah, all I have is about two lines. I'll send it to you.
Okay.
Two lines? Yes, please send it on.
No, I, I forwarded to the, yes, I'll send you what I've got.
Okay, please, because I'm, I'm so interested in it because everything is just vague around this current situation, and I'm just, I don't know what's going on and I would like to know what's going on. Okay?
Okay.
Uh, my-
Thank you.
Okay, not good, uh, I can go ahead and-
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, my next item is the, um, update for some downtown Corona virus community coalition. Town hall meetings, you all know that we meet, um, every single Tuesday at twelve noon and just reminding everybody of this. And just in case this is recorded, I'm going to, uh, give the number out again, six oh five, citizen, uh, for grabbing a pen and paper, I'll do it again at the end of the meeting. Six oh five, four seven five, five nine five zero, five zero. And the code is zero four, zero eight, zero one. Um, Councilwoman School has been working hard to make sure that the seventh congressional district is included in all of these packages. When I was in Washington DC, we met with, uh, Speaker of the House, Ms. Pelosi, and they were working on the House bill that they were, they, uh, they had Councilwoman School and the Congress for sponsoring at that time. You all know it now as bill number three or three point five or whatever number they made it to. Uh, we're on another bill, some people call it bill number four, but it's three A or three point five. She worked very hard to include, uh, the seventh congressional district and especially rural areas. She, she's done a great job in that. And we are included in this tariff act package, and I want everybody to know that just because of her hard work and Jonathan's hard work and those who are standing with them, uh, on the floor. They say he worked extremely through the night. Sometimes we're on the phone, they're like, we're still on the floor. We can't stop, they said, we can't stop, we still on the floor. So she has sent me something that I need to send to you all and share with you all. It's, uh, it's a response to Governor Ivy. Governor Ivy requested of them to send to her, uh, what they thought the phasing plan should be, reopening plan like look like, everything. So not just the Congresswoman School and Senator John Jones, but of everyone, not just the seven districts. So, uh, if you all want to read it together, we can read it together. I mean, I'll send it and y'all read it out. It's written by a page at the time. But I will send it to, uh, you all, as she has sent it to me. Um, and, and, and I'm sure that she needs us to send if we find it a good document to send with her on that. For more information on this, she will be on the call of the model, uh, to tell more about it and to ask their, uh, questions on it. Uh, we do know that the, that the governor is having a very tough one tomorrow. Uh, we'll find out if the date will be extended or not extended. You know that we have the dry street testing site at the health department, Main Street. So now we also have rural health that has kicked off. They need to kick off a union sound, uh, and they're going to make their way around Dallas County. So that will be the fourth area that some of Dallas County can check in, but right here under our nose. So we need citizens to take advantage of that, uh, the ones that will be done by rural health. You don't have to have the, all those systems that are listed. Let's just say you feel like you've been exposed, you, you may have gone somewhere or you feel like you've been exposed, well, rural health will screen you. Whereas other places might say, you know, you don't have the system, so we cannot, you know, use the test numbers. So keep that in mind, if you would. Keep our meetings in mind and make sure that you are attending often because these are live, something that's here on your face and up to the minute of date, and everybody's on the phone, what they know from Congress to governor to parent, to local parent. And I know that, um, Councilwoman Thomas, I will give you, since this is the coronavirus update, Councilwoman Thomas, uh, had reported the last time that two people in her ward had, um, had, um, the coronavirus. But her, uh, this is my item, Councilwoman Thomas, would you like to tell what has happened to the wife that's been-
Councilwoman Thomas? Councilwoman Thomas? If it's from, I'm playing along, I didn't start six to get in. I, I do like to start six to get in.
That's the, I mean, yeah, if anybody-
That's the weird, yeah.
Did he even hit start six?
Start six.
I'll have to hear it.
Okay.
Councilwoman Thomas has reported that they were doomed in a war with the coronavirus, a husband and a wife, uh, the wife had sent away, uh, yesterday, so, yeah. So that is, that is, uh, death in war, sadly, and the husband was in critical condition in Birmingham, the wife was in critical condition in Montgomery. I might have two kids backwards, but, um, the wife has, uh, has passed away, uh, they lived in war, sadly.
Councilwoman Thomas? What's my deal? Okay, Councilman, and-
I thought I heard the word too. Okay, uh, uh, Mr. President, I had asked at the last meeting on last week concerning the check writing system and asking the, uh, head over at the bank to just click the button, send and to send all, uh, checks that were written from two thousand sixteen to now. Uh, can you update us on that, when we might be receiving that?
Oh, we're trying to, yeah, really, yeah, we can hear you, so. Okay, I've been, I've been trying, I've been trying to channel this for a long while. I don't know, look at this. Okay, I, I know, I can look. I, yeah, I can, you guys, but Karen, you all could not hear me. But, uh, I'm sick here, I can't, oh, there was-
Okay, go ahead.
No, I don't know, yes, I go here, but there was some things I wanted to channel. Yes, that, that's okay, go ahead, I'll just share, of course.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Let me know if that Councilwoman Benson is there.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, let me know if that Councilwoman Benjamin says, then you uh you can come in after, uh.
Okay.
Go ahead.
And uh I just have these last two items, uh can you give us the update on when we will be receiving uh list of those checks, Mr. President?
Hopefully, we'll do that next week or so.
Okay, uh correct.
That's it, we'll do that next week or so.
Okay, and then finally, for me, I wanted to.
Hello, Councilwoman, Councilwoman, Dallas twenty sixteen, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, go ahead.
Uh-huh, um I wanted to, um, so last week I brought up uh potholes and everything in in Ward Four, you know, you all know that Ward Four is almost rid of all these potholes, but the ones that are left are really not holes there, uh are much larger than potholes, and so I asked you all last week if you had time to ride by, one that I want to do a temporary closure on, and that is the service drive to the back end of Chevron. So tomorrow, I would like to uh, if if it's the consent of council, I like to have it on the consent agenda, that we temporarily close that area, until we uh get it, people are 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 still using it, uh people are still being pulled out of when they slip over, having a ditch, um we're almost potholes, but there's these, there's these fields that are just huge that we need to take care of, and until we uh Chevron acknowledges what they're part of the field, I need to close it out, I need to close it out.
Uh, Councilwoman Benjamin, I did talk to a young lady that worked there as well, and you're right, I'm there doing some, them, them, them manholes there, there's some big holes, I go get caught every morning there, and uh and I noticed that, and I just talked to a young lady, she said that the owner's van that all he owns is just, just in the back of the store, and I told him that, yeah, that it might need to be uh uh a block off until we get some done with it, because what did I do, is you're gonna continue on talking, throwing us for money, because them holes is big back there, don't let no water get in it, it's it's a.
Yeah.
I agree with you, and I'm not over here to blow it off.
Yeah, because uh Councilwoman Jackson, and what doesn't make sense to me is that eighteen Willess come down, much larger, and you all know, much larger is leaning to the back, because it's not built for anything over four wheels, and so eighteen wheels on that street is not good, and then they go through the service roads to make themselves available to Chevron, and so the Chevron, you know, to fill them up with gas and all those kinds of things, but it's continually pounding and pounding and pounding on the same area.
Okay, we we can definitely put that on, put that on tomorrow, but it's, uh, Councilwoman uh Benjamin, uh, are there any other questions before I go to Councilmember Shaw?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, I think it comes out there, and it is, it is bad, I run the point that uh what used to be um citizens' banks, south side, um there, and that um, in a moment, it's bad. Yeah, it's bad.
All right, have you finished, Councilwoman Benjamin?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilmember Shaw? Councilmember Shaw? Councilmember Shaw?
You can hear me?
I can hear you, ma'am, go ahead.
Councilmember Shaw, yes, uh uh there's two issues I I want to chat in on, one was reserved, one was reserved, that we're talking about, because of the tax money coming in on so, uh based as not because of this uh pandemic uh virus, we went to, at our, at our last gathering, we had asked Miss Wade to come in with the recommendation, I think she need to be available to give us what she recommends, I think it should come from her, but I think it was one million, I think it was one million she told me, uh last week, you know, just casual compensation, but I would let her uh, what, if you hear from her, uh, go ahead, uh, make a. Yeah, let her give a recommendation for the rest, uh, the other is, uh, uh, I I I really, my colleague, uh, Councilwoman Benjamin, that we, that we do need to move quick, fast, and in a hurry, on sale of this municipal court jurisdiction, I, I, I too am not a member of the Public Safety Committee, but I didn't say that had on anything, and I think we left there with uh a consensus based on two, 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 two questions that was gonna be answered, uh, on whether it's justice and and uh, don't know if those uh questions have, that have, or answered, but I understand that they are, and, but I understand that they are, I think we just need to go here and move forward and make it out for election on tomorrow.
Okay, all right, all right, that's it, Councilmember Shaw? Yes, yes, for right now. All right, thank you, sir. Uh, go ahead, Councilwoman.
That's not me.
Council, okay, I can hear you.
It's Councilwoman Jackson.
Okay, I'm sorry, Councilwoman Jackson, go ahead.
Oh, I did, I want to, uh, Councilwoman Benjamin, to uh finish, President, uh, Councilwoman Shaw has brought back up the municipal justice division, um, I want to ask you the uh judge still on the phone, if you're talking with anyone at the Ministry of Public Court.
About what?
About the, about the escaping um public um examiner's report that discussed with municipal court, uh, I, maybe you didn't realize that the Ministry of Public Court would be.
Yes, I know, we're being very wild, but.
I thought.
Yes, that's right. I I have been fine, and I have been in contact with Eric Glass, but uh, Minister of Public Court.
You have been in contact with the Minister, that the Ministry of Public Court, L C, you talking with um Eric Glass?
Yes, I have.
Yes, I understand that you do.
Open.
Yes, I have. Can you tell, can you tell the council what has come out of that and what recommendations do they have for the municipal court, I think we need to enlighten that report, we need to have some of that information, because um it's going to put a different expectations on the court, the judge, and and everyone, and so that's what's playing part to my whole package in the group about that communicating.
Yes, wait for the train to go by.
Huh?
Waiting for the train to go by.
Oh, the train, you had a train.
Okay, why, wait for the train to go by. It's Councilwoman, uh, uh, hold on, Councilwoman Thomas? We're doing as far as reopening the court as far as trying to collect monies that are owed to court, you know, we only have six beds to work with in the jail, so it's just, also, there is a litigious nature of court, municipal court in Alabama right now, and you have to be very careful, we lock people up for not paying their money, we're, we've got rule eighteen, we're putting all of the uh, names and rules and all things that follow, we're taking them and putting them into one book, because it'll be one book containing the federal employee's hand book, that's rule eighteen about by the rules judicial administration, and. And also contain the books they receive when they go and receive the magistrate staying, that will be in one book, and a master book in the uh magistrate office, we need, give magistrate a raise, and we need more personnel to help straighten all this out, we've been understaffed pretty much the entire time I've been there, I mean, we're down to one magistrate and one judge right now, so we are, we're doing everything we can do with two people, everything accomplished.
Mr. uh, Judge, respectfully, um, you had a twenty twelve report, twenty, we're digging back to twenty twenty ten, that identified most, if not all of the areas, that the areas that the public examiner also um found in this report, you were totally.
But I, but I, but I.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Mr. Mr. President.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
Councilwoman Jackson, I, I need to respectfully, put, put, put in one here, and and with the point of order, I think this is probably something that just not like, and Mr. President, I I need to respectfully say this, I know you're the person, but I don't think we're in the purview of what they, they love and they say that we're gonna do something, some need, but I'm sure I think this is something that the Public Safety Committee would need to look at and talk, probably more in camera about.
Okay, great.
Instead of on a public thing, so and 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 with all due respect, Ms. Jackson, I'm I'm certainly not trying to call you out, and I.
No, ma'am, no, I don't think that you're trying to call me out, what I do understand is that we're asking for votes tomorrow, and I want to be as proud and aggressive on.
Well, not, I'm.
Exactly, no, 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 listen, 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 personally, uh, I don't think we can take that vote tomorrow, but I was looking to meet with the, I was checking tomorrow to see about that.
That will be on our, that will be on our call tomorrow as well.
Okay, okay, all right, I will, all right, then, uh.
I think we need to look at the board, I I think we need to look at that, because I didn't hear all that, but anyways, this is not, we're not supposed to be talking about this on this call, I don't think.
Yeah, but yeah, but.
Well, um, Judge Heygood is, is, he has a new court procedure because of COVID nineteen, and so he brought that up, I was assuming during your Public Safety Committee meeting, because he he has a new normal at the court because of COVID nineteen, this is why he has to announce those things, all the things I thought he was announcing, he was announcing was because of COVID nineteen. Otherwise, we wouldn't even need to be discussing whether a motion can go on the court. Well, these things, I'm here to back more personnel and and raise.
Well, we're, listen, Council, 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 have another time, we can.
This is a conversation when they can have it done now, but anyway.
We're with this move, we have, we're, we have, uh, anything else, Councilwoman Jackson? Hello?
No, no, no.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Thank you, ma'am, thank you. Uh, Councilwoman uh Thomas, are you on the phone yet? Councilwoman Thomas, okay, well, it's Councilwoman Thomas, if you're not, uh, that, that's our agenda, what this woman.
She is on the phone with President.
Councilwoman Thomas?
Let me just tell her, because she texted me that she's on and she's been on, so Councilwoman, if you could put up the star, the question. On your phone, start it, only one time, though.
Councilwoman Thomas?
She's been, she's been trying to get in for a while, I'll bring, I'll bring her in.
Can you three later in?
I will.
Okay, in the meantime, while uh Councilwoman Benjamin is three later in, just want to do a recap, uh, one item that was up in that Florida, the Channing County, it's for the tri-count, uh, Mercy, uh, Pan, that deal, uh.
I guess what for what?
Hello?
I've been on the phone forever.
All they do is, this is start six.
I did.
Well, go ahead, okay, let's go ahead, I'll put your business on.
Okay, uh, I have.
Tractor trailer.
Okay, yes, tractor trailer, the average problem with the tractor trailers being parked in the, in the resident area, we have a store over on River, uh, Sally Creek Circle, uh, where Raceway, where Raceway is letting the eighteen Willess park their tractor trailers in that area, some of the constituents were concerned about the tractor trailers because that area is already tore up bad, and they're coming in, parking their trailers, leaving them at Raceway, which was used in the parts of the area where people came into their residence, and I know that we have this, have a code for this in there about this, the trailers being parked in the city in the resident area, one of the guys called me and told me a little ago about the trailer, that store has been let to park, and he wants to know why he can't park the truck, uh, parking trailer over there, uh, Raceway, but it it's on that street part of Raceway, uh, where uh, that's been searched, and the people are complaining about them letting the trailers be parked over there, so I know that we, it says that the eighteen Willess trailers are supposed to be parked somewhere else, not in the resident area.
Okay, yes, we do have an ordinance on the book for that, and what you tried, it's uh, uh, you're with Chief, Chief Booker, are you on the line?
Mr. President?
Yes, ma'am.
I recently, uh, Attorney, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Uh, 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 Councilwoman Jackson, and I have worked together on that, because um, there was, I, I have one of those she's taught that parked up on Martha Place, which is the last street that's down with it, because they're K V and so on, but anyway, they're certainly used in the, and Mayor Madison had recently found that and was working with us, so he ought to be able to get that and, and, you know, have that handy, and and I was asking, uh, Attorney Madison is on the phone, he was supposed to be getting that for me, I was just asking him to get that for every council member.
And also too, Councilwoman Thomas, to phone it up, because I was on Chief, with Chief Booker.
I did, I did talk, I did talk with Chief Booker about it, and I told him we do have an ordinance on the book about those, and uh, the guy called, uh, it was too long ago, he wanted to know, she said, well, the store there said we can park, but I told him we have an ordinance that you, you know, you can't bring your trailer, you know, in the in the resident area, because that area is already tore up, that street is already tore real bad, and uh, it is not only him, it's, I went out there, he was the property, made about five trailers that were parked out there by Raceway, someone was parked behind the store, and someone was parked on the side, and that's why the resident, at Barry Creek Circle, called me and asked me to come out and look, and I did go out, and then I called Chief, and I told him he takes a center officer out there to to look at it, and uh, they want, because the stores be, they can park, they want to bring their trailers in and leave them.
Okay, well, we have an ordinance for that, and I, well, Chief, uh, Councilwoman Youngblood, too, if, once later, she might should get a copy of, of the ordinance to us, maybe we can get uh, over to Chief, Booker, copy that.
Um, Councilwoman Thomas, are you, are you through with that part?
Yes, I'm through with that part.
Okay.
I'm just.
Okay, I have something else to add, along those lines that I think that we're all probably having trouble with too, and that's something that people parking in the yard, um, because we don't think a whole lot about it, but one of the things is that it, people complain about their, their, their parks and their lines get broken, and that's one thing that causes it, it breaks down the lines and pipes, especially as old as ours are when people park their cars all up the place, people are supposed to park in the yard, and they're doing it real bad, have y'all noticed that?
Yes, 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 I have noticed.
Yeah, and so, um, and it, gosh, is I warn you, so, you know, we're really in the covenants with these people, so I'm hoping that we're on the way to getting something done real soon with that, because we're really all missing that, with not, not only trash something with that too, but with the way people are, like with the truck, the trailer trucks, with the cars parking in the yard, because that, that affects, not just us being ugly, but, you know, the, the, um, the, uh, three cutting pipes breaking down and all that, so I just wanted to mention that too, tag on that, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman, uh, contract for potholes for what time?
Yes, uh, everybody know we're, uh, on working where we have a business store where Dollar General is, uh, that area right there is terrible, a lot of people's cars are getting messed up, and uh, I went out. are getting messed up. And, uh, I went out, uh, I had a, uh, lady, uh, the beaters got messed up. Well, after that rain, the other day, we had that rain, and, uh, I went out and, uh, she was asking me, and I told her that, uh, we just got, uh, some money in for our oil leasing, and I'm gonna try to do something with that, it is real bad over there. That whole area over there on Griffin, right there off across from Church and Tickers was Dollar General, when you go in there, that whole area is messed up. And also, once I fix this, I'm gonna have to ask the person that own that property where they have a car wash there, he's gonna need to get him a, uh, a drain for his water, where he washes the cars, where the water run off there, so it can go into the, the city drain, uh, on that side, because he has been digging up those, uh, trying to make the water so it can run off. And, uh, once we do that repair there, then, uh, he's gonna have to find a way for his water to run off, because it, it's terrible over there. And I, I, I got to fix that, that area right there on Griffin. And it's, if anybody go to Dollar General, you know, over there, it's, it's like over there, off, off Broad and on Griffin. Also.
Special question for Counselwoman Thomas, have, have you had, uh, how much it's going to cost to fix this part of it?
Yeah, I, I called, uh, uh, I had asked the Smith brothers to come out with me. He's not part of, they'll be home. Uh, I asked him to come out and, uh, ask him what can I do for this for the meantime, you know, try to, can we do something with it, because it's amazing, it's just a half of that, uh, area of that street is messed up. And, uh, I asked him, and he told me that, he said, oh, this is so bad. He said, the only thing that he recommended that we could do is to try to fill those, uh, those big old, big old holes in, because if it rains anymore, the more it rains, the bigger, and people travel, because they store there, they have to go in, it starts from Broad Street, actually enter in to go to Dollar General. And from that section all the way apart, right there where, uh, the back of, uh, Dollar General, that area part is, is, is disaster. So, I asked him, can I, what can he do for the time being, to whatever he be able, because that whole street needs resurfing anyway, but I can only do what I can to fill those big canyon holes in. And, uh, he told me he's supposed to get back with me with that. And, uh, I had another area that over on, uh, off of Ruth and Mac Dollar back in, that were residents that live there. The pavement on the street is really, uh, this is something that, you know, that's been done over there. They have the same problem, so, I took him over there and he told me that, uh, he would try to, he would try to fix, they would look at that, and then he said he would put it all together and let me know, he would send me, uh, what it would cost to fix that. And I, I hadn't received it from him yet, he's gonna send it to me. Also, I have another serious problem, and this is a health problem in our community, we all talk about this, but I have to bring that, my work order to be put in, where we have on city roadway, in a part of park area in my residence, is in the, this black community, over where people live at, where the sidewalk's up. It is ridiculous that the grass has taken this, the sidewalk, and the people have beginning to, this stuff is look bad, but the grass, well, they're getting to bring household garbage. I went out, and it's ridiculous that, it's, that's, it is so much household garbage that is covered, where they just find an area with a overgrown grass, and they just dump the garbage. So, I had talked to maybe about seven areas that is, is filthy, with bags of garbage. And, uh, I don't want that, because we have an area like that where I live at, uh, and it, and it's shut up in the community. We have enough problems, people can't even walk the sidewalk. And people are beginning to, at night, people are beginning to walk people. So, I told, they called me, so, I told them, only thing that I can do is try to get the garbage up and try to get the sidewalk, so they won't be, they're jumping out of the pussy. So, all I can do is to try to get this grass cut down. So, I began to put my work order there, and, uh, the city came through, they only cut on the main area of L.A. Alloa, some of the, the city sidewalks, but the street that goes behind a lot of hail, hail path, uh, mentor, houses, all that area where people live at, it's becoming to be a high crime area, and it's becoming to be a lot of garbage. I did this before, uh, last year, I cleaned up, we, we took fifty five trailers of garbage to the landfill, and now it's becoming to be the same way again. But if we keep the grass cut off the sidewalk, and keep the city roadway open where people walk in, I don't think we would have that garbage, but when they see the high grass, they begin to come in at night and beginning to dump bags and bags of garbage.
Okay, so, talk about that garbage. Go ahead, so, talk about that garbage, Counselwoman, I can help you with that, uh, we can probably get somebody to help you with that garbage, get that garbage out.
Yeah, I had, uh, I told, uh, some of the citizens that live right there, they, they're afraid, and once they go in at night, you know, you know, some people have to go to work, you know, and I'm in an area where, uh, where a family member lives in a dark area, where he said he just hear cars, you can hear the people coming in and stopping in, and he tries to get up to try to catch, but you can't catch them. So, I said, if we get this grass cut and get this garbage out, we wouldn't have this crime we have now. We're beginning to have people getting off. And over there in that junkyard over there, this is a part of war heaven, where we have, the people are beginning to be afraid, you know, we had people got shot and robbed over there off the Texas coast, in that area. When I kept it cut down, low, this, this little traumatized guy, he's, he's back up high. And, uh, when people come in at night and stuff, people be hiding out up in there, and, uh, they're afraid that, uh, that something, it happened before, someone got shot and robbed, and they asked me, please do what I gave before, they, so that for one side of the railroad track to the other side, people could see, but then now, the whole junkyard has been got, the grass is blowing up high, and, uh, no one, uh, I keep putting, I put the work order in, but I cannot afford to let anyone else get hurt over here in this neighborhood, overgrown grass.
Okay, what we can probably do, uh, Counselwoman, uh, Thomas, we can probably address that, grass, that issue, but also with that garbage, uh, let's talk about that on tomorrow, so we definitely can, uh, get someone to take care of that for us, like we have in the past.
Okay, I just want, you know, uh, lately, things have began to happen now over here, we, people have got robbed, and in the area where I'm talking about, it, it, it's a danger area, it's a very danger area. And I try to tell people, don't even go in there, because I don't know, they, they've started to like that, so, uh, I just want to be, don't want nobody to get hurt over here, I don't want nothing to happen to anybody.
Yes ma'am, thank you. Um, that, that's all, all your business items. Uh, let me get, get, do a recap, uh, as far as Florida consent agenda. I know we have a tri-count emergency, uh, pan that deal, uh, also temporary closure of the, uh, street, um, I think it was something that's about the one, what, uh, recommendation that was waived, uh, was going to bring forth to the council. I need to check on, check, make this wait also about raising the budget, uh, is there anything else in terms of mission, as far as this agenda? Is there anything else? And also too, I said, I think that I last counseled me, uh, for March April and May, uh, for small business owners, as far as with parent itself tax, that, that pay up rate without the, uh, without a penalty, the, due to the fact that, uh, you know, a lot of them will shift out due to the coronavirus, so I would put that on the consent agenda also. All right, are there any other questions, uh, coming at this time?
Yes, help me, yes.
Counselwoman.
Is there something saying on there?
I.
Yeah, I, um, yeah, he, he was, he was calling earlier, um, uh, Mr. President.
Yes ma'am.
That tri-count, when you said tri-count, uh, were you, I mean, that in regards to Counselwoman Youngblood's emergency?
I think it was already, uh, from, I, I got in late, uh, it sounded like the work was already been done. Only thing we got to do is just pay up, am I correct?
Yes, I, I was just saying, does tri-count equal what you were talking about, is that the same thing? Yes, that is.
Uh, yes ma'am, yes ma'am.
The one that's already been done, once the second one, one mark.
Yeah, if you can just send me that total, yes ma'am, if you just send me that total, uh, Counselwoman, uh, Youngblood, we can put it on the consent agenda, and, uh, we can move forward with that. Uh, and also, you mentioned about the resolution, uh, if you just send it to our council members, and, uh, we can move, uh, closer, we can put that on the consent agenda, uh, so we can move forward. Also, council that's going to make requests, uh, we'll find, find out of the government, uh, decision on tomorrow. So, uh.
Okay, finally, I want to give the number, I promise, again, the president, I promise that this is the number, um, um, this is the, to the citizens, this is the number again to the twelve news, uh, weekly town hall meeting, the number is always the same, and the, the code is always the same, so, if you like it, you go ahead and say it in your phone, but that number is, the calling number is six zero five four seven five five nine five zero, and the exit code is zero four zero eight zero one. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you ma'am.
And the, and the President, the President, Counselwoman Jordan, yes, uh, I thought the meetings are made, Mr. President, we need to look at, get back to the chamber. This telephone, this telephone call sucks, and I think, uh, that, that there's not a rule in the chamber where we can sixty apart each other, but it would give us a better opportunity to conduct this, without being handed to a certain, uh, without being handed to a certain subject.
That's true, that's true, and we're looking at, hopefully, it's made, like I said, after the government, uh, tomorrow, uh, it will be after today, and hopefully, we can move forward, you know, like I said, back in the train, because we can cover more, uh, that way. Are there any other courses at this time?
Yes, President Booney.
Counselwoman, um, Congress.
Can you, yes, can you tell me, how can I go with this direction on Bogan and Mabry? Uh, we had this problem before with the, with the owner of the apartment, uh, at nearby railroad track, we had this problem with, uh, law footage, uh, it is, it is bad, it is really bad, and when I say bad, it's bad. And, uh, I think we need to do, we need to find out how can we make him take care of this, this, this issue, because I would like to use, and the more council, people don't live like this in the city. And, uh, it's ridiculous, uh, uh, it's sad, it's sad to see it, it is, this is rad, it's ridiculous.
And, uh. What we probably can do is, excuse me, go ahead.
Yes, and, uh, I don't, I don't know what else to do to try to, to get this situation taken care of very, real soon, because, uh, I don't know if it's the stewardship or broke, or it's whatever, it's just grilling all out, and it's, it's ridiculous. And, uh, the people are living in these apartments.
That is the landlord, that's the landlord, right?
Yes, the landlord, yes. He, he has been warned several times, he, he keep going through the same thing, and, uh, now he has really got out of, out of control.
Well, I tell you what, uh, Miss, I'm turning matters for myself, and you and, you know, the council member, like, meet now that tomorrow, take a look at it, and take a turn at it, uh, ask him.
Oh, Uncle Mabry, um, um, like, uh, Mabry and Bogan, and, uh, it's, it's terrible.
Well, what we probably can do is, uh, get in contact with the attorney, the office agency, do a, uh, that's two people for the, uh, this president, hello?
Yes, this is Attorney Madison.
Hey, Attorney, how you doing?
I'm all right, I had to change, had to change phones, I was trying to get in, and someone sent a text message that, uh, my phone is going to voice mail, so I, I changed phones and got in. I've been listening most, mostly, uh, for the last hour, hour and thirteen minutes, and I, and I did definitely want to agree to go with you and Counselwoman Thomas. Was it Mabry and Bogan, Counselwoman Thomas?
Yes, Mabry and Bogan, it is terrible.
Yeah, I could do that.
I, 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 I can't, the man, we got to do something.
I can do that tomorrow. We just need to get off my, and talk about what time. I'll, I'll do that tomorrow.
Okay.
I, I also had, uh, a brief report, Mr. uh, Mr. President, if you don't mind.
Go ahead, sir.
Uh, I was, I was on the, uh, baby, committee meeting today, and spoke of talking with Rob Johnston from the Leepah Municipalities. We talked about two items, one of the items was the issue of electronic meetings and the governor's order allowing meetings to take place and still conform with open meetings. That, uh, I did get a frequently, frequently asked questions sheet that I said, uh, Mr. Johnson, or Texas Johnson, sent me, he did send it, I forwarded that sheet to the entire council, uh, when you get a chance this evening, if you all take a look at your notebooks, it should be there. There's only one page, and it did include one of the questions I was more concerned, that half equally concerned about, as, uh, meeting electronic, and what constitutes the definition of essential minimum function. But I think if there is, listening to briefly what was said in the frequently, frequently asked questions sheet from the Alabama Leepah Municipalities, uh, it reads about the electronic means of meeting that the governor's March eighteenth and April second, twenty twenty confirmation, provides the option for governmental entities to hold a meeting by telephone or video conference, have members be counted for a forum, and photo matters come and forth about it, so long as the meeting is limited to either A, matters that are necessary to respond to COVID-19, or B, matters that are quote necessary to perform essential minimum functions of the governmental body, unquote, which in cases equipped must allow members to hear one another at the same time, and no less than twelve hours after the meeting. A summary of the meeting must be posted on the entity's website, or in another primary location. Uh, there's another mention there of government body, private numbers, and two or more counties, that's not applicable to the council. Then the essential minimum functions information, reasons follows, uh, under name, the likely department, this type of government, or this type of governmental entity, depending on the statutory purpose and authority of the entity, in cases where the entity is charged with specific, specifically now due to, it may be easier to conclude that those bodies are being performed, such as the law and board, but again, that's not applicable to the council. What they, what is said about the council over this, where the entity's powers are broader, or, or legislative in nature, like a city council, the determination is more difficult. Questions to ask include, quote, is this action needed to keep the entity's services or operations ongoing, unquote, and, quote, if this action is not taken, is there a reasonable likelihood that the entity of those it serves suffer prejudice, harm, or failure to meet an existing obligation? Uh, if the answers to these questions are yes, then it is reasonable that the action constitute any essential minimum function. It is advised that the entity neglect those violated and its minutes, because the grave essential minimum functions is not defined, the entity should exercise caution, particularly with council where it is not clear. Uh, that's it as to essential minimum functions. And I heard, I believe.
Mr. Attorney, Mr. Attorney, that sounds like what you sent us in the email, are you reading it to us?
Yes, I'm sure reading it, I wanted to make sure.
I was reading, you, you, yeah, you had just to, uh, I'll start.
Well, I wasn't, I wasn't aware that you had, had the sheet, oh, I, I apologize.
Yes.
And so, your, I just did not know you had got, Counselwoman, that's what.
I was, you read it, you read it, we, we don't, got it when you.
I missed all that, I missed all that, I apologize, I missed all that. My main concern though was really about posting the, the summary of the meeting, after, uh, after twelve hours after the meeting includes, and, and I, I had a conversation with President Booney. Booy about that the other day, uh, the, the key is it must be somewhere on, either on the, the body's website, or, uh, uh, or at a place that's, uh, very conspicuous, another prominent location. That was my main concern.
I said, I did mention the fact that it would be placed on our Facebook pages, and if you would look at, uh, agenda, we have likely where, uh, the minutes would be summarized.
Okay, I'm not sure that's a Facebook page, I'm not sure that the Facebook page, President, constitutes, uh, another prominent location, uh, the entity's website or in another prominent location, but, but always I can defer the clarification on, on the Facebook page too, and I'll do that, protect do that tomorrow morning.
Okay. All right, uh, are there any other questions?
Go ahead, Attorney. There were two other items I wanted to, to ask the council to consider, uh, tomorrow night, obviously, deliberation tonight is up to you, but probably tomorrow night, if, if, uh, you conclude that any further action is taken, uh, one was, uh, there are allegations flying back and forth between, uh, a couple of employees about a hostile working ground being created. Uh, there is also a question of exposure of confidential information about employees to the media, uh, which are controlled by law, state and or federal law, and equal employment opportunity considerations. So I would discourage anyone from releasing the names or confidential information of any city self-employed employee to the media, as well as observing the rules of decor, and basically, common sense to that, invading people's workspace or attempting to infuriate, inflame, harass, annoy, otherwise alarm anyone, which by the way is also, can also, and come under the charge. Uh, and then there's a total, FLSA, minimum salary versus thousands ways consideration that the council is ongoing, and I don't know if the council is going to be able to take that up, uh, tomorrow.
No, we're not, we probably won't be taking that action. That action, that action, that's the council board to council, that action, I just want to have, that's the council board to council, uh, we would not probably be taking that up tomorrow. I, I was about to point out that I'm damn ready, willing, and able to talk about those matters with the council at this moment.
Can you hear me?
Yes, uh, Mr. President, is Mr. President...
Hello, go ahead, Councilwoman, yes, yes, Councilman, sure.
You, Mr. Attorney, you ready, willing, and able to talk to us about the matters, including, you said confidential information being shared, that's interesting to me. So you said you're ready, willing, and able to talk to us concerning those man, management issues, how are people getting hold of this information? So let's be ready to talk about all of that when we do come.
Sure, sure, and some of the like ones that I know, some I may not get any answer.
Uh, Councilor, sure.
Uh, Councilman.
Councilor, sure. Oh, Councilor Randolph, uh, Councilor Randolph.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you, go ahead.
Okay.
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, I, I appreciate that, uh, to the attorney being the spokesperson for the mayor, that, uh, it seemed like, uh, we need to take a look at, uh, putting the city attorney, uh, up under the council, because, uh, our, our attorney seemed like he one-sided, you know, uh, with this, uh, talking about somebody harassing employees, we don't, council don't harass employees, and, and...
But we can meet there, she, you know.
Yeah, that what I'm saying, but for him to sit there and talk about council member harassing, uh, employees, that councilwoman, Councilwoman, uh, Councilwoman...
Randolph, that's the floor.
I did not say that the council was harassing anyone, I said employees, there were accusations flying back and forth between employees, not the council.
Okay, well...
He was harassing, he sounded like...
Hello, uh, Councilor Randolph, and then we resume to, uh, Councilwoman Jackson, and then what we probably need to do is just go ahead on when we resume to, uh, regular meetings, uh, but Attorney, now, in the office.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be better.
Mr. President.
Oh, what's up, Councilor Randolph, yes, sir.
Uh, we need to take a look at, uh, giving us some militant, uh, pay, cutting trees down, uh...
Yes, sir.
I don't know, do we need to make a motion to suspend our rule? Because, you know, our rule says checks are cut on the fifteenth and the thirtieth, uh, this guy hasn't got paid in, in, uh, in two months, so, uh...
Wow.
We, we need, we need to make a decision tomorrow to suspend our rules, uh, so nobody will call and, and, and all those folks are saying we, uh, paying folks on off days, you know, uh...
Yes, sir.
We got to do something, the man be good, do what we done, you don't...
Keep it down a break down.
Yeah, you don't want to run off, uh, 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 good health, you know, so, uh, council members, you, you know, if, if y'all don't pay the man, he came to sit in halls Friday to get paid, they said they ain't known that about no checks, came to sit in halls Friday before that, then, they didn't know anything about checks, so let's, let's claim this guy.
Look at John, remember?
We voted on that, uh...
We voted for him to get paid.
Yeah, that was about, what, three weeks ago?
Yes.
Because I, because I, I can recall, because council was sure they'd motion it, uh, I think I stopped it emotionally, so...
Yeah, but I, I, I would, I would get with this wave tomorrow, uh, because I think, we should definitely email something to that update.
Mr. President, and Councilor Randolph, this is Councilwoman, Councilwoman Benjamin, this man has, uh, done a work, the thirtieth is coming up, let's put him on the conservative deal, and let's put the other item on the conservative, and pay this man for his work.
We can do that, because, I do agree, because, I mean, one thing about you calling, not only, you should cut down the trees, you should also pick it up, you know, the dead animals, so, uh, we should, and I do confirm with Councilor Randolph, we don't want her ready for it. Okay, anything else, council members?
Yes, I have your...
All right, go ahead, who's on? All right, go ahead, who's on?
Who's on?
Hello, uh, Councilwoman Jackson, Councilwoman Jackson.
You said, I was the Councilwoman Randolph, and you come to me, I just, I was just going to, uh, say that, um, that this is the, um, our attorney, this evening, um, that he knows, he'd like to get real effective, that he does, uh, perform to this meeting, but also will knock out, uh, those, the HR, the, 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 money, for those, that's the focus of the badge, um, he should be taking those things from there, and she's not involved, so I think, uh, she, she, she'll be discussing those things, but, 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 yes, yes, it matters.
Also too, thanks, Councilwoman Jackson, also too, uh, uh, attorney, uh, probably continuing to use a ventilation, uh, we can show, to keep you, that you look at a resolution to decide whether I, I want to follow up on the tier one, uh, tier two, and, and definitely get with this wave to see how much money it will be, uh, uh, even if they go up to the tier two, but I would definitely begin with you with a res, resolution, and hopefully, uh, next time, or maybe something like that, so that, that may come, you know, and move forward with it, with a motion for it forward, but I think I have a motion...
Mr. President, I, I had said it's early, but it seemed like me making no attention.
I could hear you.
I said, we need to take...
He got cut off.
We need to take...
Yeah, I could hear you.
The city attorney, the city attorney, the mayor, the council.
Well, that's, I don't think we have to do, I think, do it deal or, uh...
Yeah, well, we're not here, I'm here, hard to done, because, uh, you know, we don't need no city attorney to be on one side, and so, you need a city attorney, not the mayor's attorney, he supposed to be the same for a busy council and a mayor, not being one-sided the way you are, you always come with this one-sided stuff, all right, I don't have time for that.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir, thank you.
Mr. President.
Councilman Johnson, go ahead. I did, uh, yeah, I did talk with, yeah, I did talk with, with, we probably will be able to vote on it tomorrow, uh, it will have to be, uh, part of that face meet, but I did mention it to your attorney about the lady hundred years old, we talked about it, and I, I would definitely give it, give it to him, Councilman, Councilman.
Okay, thank you, Councilman, appreciate it.
All right, that's our story, me, Mr. Attorney, uh, reported to getting with you all on tomorrow. All right, thank you.
All right, good night.
Good night, bye-bye.
Good night, everyone, good night.